Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. This is the Porter County Board of Commissioners meeting June 19th, 2018. We'll move right to the consent agenda, which is approval of minutes for May 15th, 2018. Approval of payroll, May 18th and June 1st, 2018. We have approval of claims, May 17th, May 24th, June 1st, June 7th, and June 14th of 2018. We have a rates and measures monthly report for April 16th and May 15th. And then we also have the county's comp time report for the month of May as well. We'll also move, part of the consent agenda is Memorial Opera House service agreements and rental agreements. We have Stephanie Reader for artistic services agreement, South Shore Orchestra venue rental agreement, that's a nonprofit, Catherine Griffin venue rental agreement for wedding, Right Side Music LLC venue rental agreement, MTI Productions contract production of Miracle on 34th Street, Connor Drag artistic service agreement, Hospice of the Calumet area venue rental agreement, nonprofit. That should outline everything in the consent agenda, and with that, I'll open the floor to the board.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
We have a motion and second for the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're going to move now to the announcements on our board meeting. We would like, at this point in time, could we have Rich Sexton and Jim Polarek come up here, up in front? We want everybody to see ya.[134.47][134.47](laughing)
Excuse me, Boy Scout attire.
Yeah.
Seeing a little more of you than I wanted to.[142.41][142.41](laughing)
I did clean the wood carving chips off my lap.
Over the last, over the last 60, 90 days, we have had the existing, the current head of the Highway Department had put in to, wanted to go back to a more simpler way in the Highway Department. Andy McKay is moving on. He's staying with the Highway Department, but he is going to be moving down to Couch and the Heatherman Office, and he's going to be back to a truck. And he's going to finalize his last several years here at the county. Andy just wanted a much simpler life. I think after our flooding event that we had this spring, the Highway Department got pretty beat up, hard. And I just think it took a toll on Andy. I know we all loved him up here. We all think the world of him. I know there are a lot of other people in the county that do too. And we wish him well, but he's still with the family. But with that, we had to make some decisions on where we were going to take this department. It's a very integral department on what we're trying to do up here. It's probably one of our biggest departments, taking care of our 816 miles of roads, our 127 bridges. And I'd also like to let everybody know that if you see a bridge in the city or a town, that's our bridge. We got them all. So it's a lot of work. It comes from a past of trying to just maintain things. And we're, the Board of Commissioners up here, have set an aggressive schedule to move forward with this department, make it become more than really what it is. And I think you'll be seeing that transformation over the next couple of years. And I think we have these two gentlemen here, we've tagged a lot of that responsibility around their necks. And they're up to the challenge. We're very excited about that. And we're very excited about having some leadership in this department that can take us into the, into the future here, which is really what this is all about up here. So what will be happening is effective yesterday, Rich Sexton, Rich, why don't you stand up and why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself, where you hail from, and how long you've been with the Highway Department, and just give a little bit of a brief summary on who Rich Sexton is?
I was born and raised in Porter. I live, I just live up in, right outside of Chesterton, or Chesterton St. Levenson, the county. I have a wife and two kids. They're both, they have a lead. My wife's name is Megan. I spent five and a half years in the Army. I got out of the Army, was in the Army for five days. And I was working here already. So I've been here since November 9th of 2009, November 9th, 2009. And I've worked here ever since. I was the assistant supervisor for a while. I was a project manager at the stormwater Highway Engineering Office for a while. And then I wanted to come back to the Highway Department, see if I could make a difference. And I'm going to. So that's what we're going to be headed with that.
Thanks, Rich. For most of you that may not know, one of the things we did when we developed our stormwater management board, we have, the stormwater division of the county is now working much, much closer with our Highway Department. And it's been something that we've wanted to happen up here for a long time, and it's starting to happen now. So as we're, as we're always talking about drainage, we have road drainage too. So it's very integral of what happens. And it's very important that we get these two departments to start communicating together, working together. And a lot of that is starting to happen, but I think with these gentlemen here, I think we're going to see a little bit more of that going forward. And then Jim, Jim Polarek currently is the foreman at the Chesterton, Chesterton North Garage. And Jim is going to be elevated from there to assistant supervisor for the Highway Department. And Jim, why don't you stand up, tell us, Jim came, is, he is Cub Scout camping this week with his son in Elkhart. He's got a Boy Scouts, I'm sorry, he's older than that. I'm sorry, Jimmy, Jimmy take a swing at me if he heard that. But why don't you tell a little bit about you, Jim, and go from there.
Well, I want to thank you, thank the Commissioners for entrusting both of us in this, this job. We'll do it, we'll get it done right. As Mr. Good said, I've been foreman at the Port County District for a year and a half, and then coming up forward with Mr. Sexton down here at the main office. Lifelong Porter County resident, three years in the military. Spent the last 30 years in Morgan Township, and that's where I was raising the family. And like you said, I'm at Boy Scout camp with my son this week. So I left Boy Scout camp, come down here, and now we're going back to Boy Scout camp. So that's the attire. So I look forward to doing more to serve the residents of the county.
Thanks, Jim. And again, Jim is a Morgan Cherokee. And that's very important to some of us up here. Right, Jeff? Right, Vicki?
Yes, exactly.
Thank you. Look forward to what you guys bring to us, and looking forward to working with you and getting this, getting this department ramped up. So any other comments from the Commissioners? I'll open it up to the floor to anybody else before we move on.
We've covered it.
Great. Thank you. Go start a fire, Jim.
Yeah, thank you.
Have fun, gentlemen, and thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd also like to make an announcement also. We will be accepting applications to the Airport Board Authority. The appointment will be made at the July 10th meeting. And again, that is for anybody interested in being on the Porter County Airport Board. I know they do have, you may want to look up the statutes and that, but they do have qualifications and other things that they're looking for on this board. But we are announcing at this meeting that we will be accepting applications, and those will come to the Commissioner's office. Kathy in the back here usually handles those for us. So wanted to announce that. So now we'll move to new business. We have an ordinance, this is a second reading, an ordinance establishing a non-reverting fund for the receipt of charitable donations for the Porter County 911 Department. Again, this is second reading. I'll open the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second to create, to establish a non-reverting fund for the receipt of charitable donations for the Porter County 911 Department. This is second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the list, we're going to move to Garrett Construction. This is change order number eight for the admin plaza and building renovation in the amount of $2,414. Open up the floor. Any questions from the board?
Is this the last one?
I think we still have retainage outstanding. And I think further down in the agenda, we're going to come back and talk about the plaza. We're going to be doing just a little bit of additional work out here that is more at the street level, but we'll, we'll talk about that a little bit into it. But this is for change order number eight for $2,414.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second for change order number eight for the admin plaza renovation in the amount of $2,414. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We opened up that, we opened up the plaza with the groundbreaking, I think it was last week or two weeks ago. So everything's working out there, and it's turning out, it's turned out real well. So we're real glad that that's, that disruption is over up here. Next on the agenda is American Structure Point. We have a payment application number eight in the amount of $31,714, $41.16 for the plaza renovation, the remaining balance of $25,397. So this is to American Structure Point.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second for American Structure Point, payment application number eight for $31,741.16. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have Americo. I'd like to ask Scott Cherry if he can come forward from Stillman. Scott, we're going to do number four, number five, and then we're going to jump to number nine, so we can get your stuff done. And then you can, again, this is Scott Cherry. He's from Stillman. He's project manager, lead person on all of our projects we got going on right now. This, number four is for Americo Inc. And Scott, why don't you give us a little update as to what this is all about?
I believe this has to do, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I believe it has to do with the courthouse work. Usually in older buildings, there's a chance that there are some hazardous materials. They don't present immediate hazards to the public, but they're usually built into some of the old materials that were used, such as caulkie, in some cases, fluoridile, and so forth. So the proposal is from Americo to, who is a local environmental company, done a lot of work with, to take a look at those areas and confirm, particularly where we're taking windows out, and some of the other items in the court building, just environmental consulting to identify if there is any potential material that needs to be taken out.
And so this agreement here was for $1,100 for the Valpo courthouse, and then $800 for North County. So that's what's in front of us today, to do some product testing up there on certain items that were identified.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second for Americo Inc. for $1,100 for the Valpo courthouse projects, and $800 for the North County courthouse. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next we have Shai of Hatterly. This is sort of an interesting one. Scott, why don't you tell us what you, as Stillman, our construction manager, has done for the county here? Or Scott, or which Scott?
I think Mr. Cherry can go first.
Okay. And just to backtrack real quick, the money that you just approved for the environmental, that was in the budget and anticipated to a certain extent. So the county has looked to purchase, or has purchased, the old courthouse. So we need architectural services in there. We know that the 911 building is-
The old jail.
The old jail. I'm sorry, not the old courthouse. Thank you. The old courthouse. We know that we have to, we're going to do the 911 center there. So we need design services for that. And Shai of Hatterly, again, a local firm that has done a lot of work around the area. They were currently working at the Expo Center-
Yep.
-as the architect. We solicited proposals from them for the old jail. There was also, under their contract from a while back, some services to do, take a look at some areas in this building. So we thought that if we can combine those services in this building along with, and also the architect at the courthouse, and the, we can combine those services with the 911 facility at the old jail, and with the, what we plan on doing with the other spaces in there, there'd be some economies. Again, I mentioned, they were at the Expo Center, and the reason, they had a fee there, the budget came in a little bit less, so they adjusted their fee on the Expo Center, and also combined it with the other projects, and were able to save a substantial amount. I think it was maybe $90,000 to that extent by kind of combining all of them. And it makes sense because they're all kind of going together, those projects, so.
So, hey, but we were able to, I think we had a relatively small contract, maybe $32,000 for some design work here that was early on, before the advent of purchasing 157 came back around. So that's getting taken care of in this amendment. Then we have the $85,000 reduction in the Expo contract based upon our current design estimates. And then we have the new contract based on $3 million worth of construction work within 157 at 9%.
Correct. Any questions from the board? I think, I think this proves that with our team that we have doing this capital improvement project, it shows we're, all hands are on deck, and we're looking at, not money's just going out, but we're also trying to figure out how we can grab some money back in these things too. So it's pretty fluid, it's pretty fast-paced, but these are the type of things that come out of good planning and, and good fiscal management. So very pleased to have this. And I think with Shai working on the courthouse, a lot of the people that are coming from the old courthouse to into the new building, they're sort of dealing with these, both departments on each end of the building. So it was only, it was only sensible to have the same architect, be dealing with the same thing, so we didn't create a lot of confusion with two different architects. And that's when the communication in these projects usually break down. So pretty excited about this, and we're real proud that we were able to, to grab some dollars back for the county, right around $90,000. So open it up to the floor. Any comments or motion or whatever from the floor?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second for Shai of Hatterly, Amendment One for the Porter County Annex Building Renovation at 157 Franklin Street, an amount of 9% of construction cost. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And then number nine, this is dealing with the Stillman contract, which Mr. Cherry represents Stillman. So why don't you tell us a little bit of how we got to this?
Okay, I'll do my best.
There are no, there are no pincies or anything.
No. A lot of it is really confirming our contract, clarifying and locking in now that we have a lot more information to be able to determine our fees associated with it. If you look back in the beginning, we started out as a construction manager and program manager. You had X amount of dollars with so many projects. And it was my job to make sure that we develop a budget for each one of those projects, along with a schedule. As we go through the process, hire architects, all that information becomes clearer and clearer. In my original budget, I always anticipate the worst-case scenario when it comes to not only our fees, architects' fees, and things like that. But as you go through, you can, by working together, like we have, with the architects, the Commissioners, and everybody, you're able to optimize the schedule a little bit, and be able to take advantage of overlapping activities, which means less site guys involved on my end. So as you go through and identify these projects, you're able to more clearly identify your staffing. We knew what the fee was. We were kind of locked into what the fee was overall, but we couldn't identify the staffing, which is a function of the construction schedule and, and scope. So through that exercise, there was three items, I believe, I listed on the amendment. First two were just confirmation for all of our protection to say that we had an original agreement to do X amount at the administrative building and the 911. We just kind of consolidated all that together. And there was no change in what we originally talked about. From a staffing standpoint, we know that the most complex project probably is going to be the North Annex, where we're going to have a full-time guy on staff. At the Expo Center, we'll have a full-time. And the other projects are, we can consolidate by utilizing some help with our guys. So we're not just wasting time, having, you're paying for a guy to just stand around and watch. And we're confident in this approach. So all that being said, when we budgeted the project, the savings comes from what I budgeted originally for our staffing and what we call general conditions. And by this consolidation, it was significantly less, as you could see, to the tune of about $320,000 combined. So what that does now, from this point forward, if nothing were to change significantly in scope or duration, we're locked in and we're ready to go. And we're getting ready to receive bids soon, so we're confident with where we're at. So I hope you'll approve the amendment.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a tough one there. No, I just, I want to thank Stillman for being above board and, and working through us with all these things. I would also like to acknowledge that I think this is, again, once again, showing what we're doing and working with Stillman. And we've been meeting ad nauseous over these projects and trying to stay to a schedule that is pretty, pretty fast-paced schedule for development. And-
Especially government development.
Especially government development. They're sort of not used to that, but we're, we're pushing the threshold. We want to get these projects a lot, we want to get a lot of shovels in the ground this, this spring, or fall. And it's, it's been a monumental effort. But again, because we're getting all the construction together, and we have our projects laid out, that's how we were able to sort of take advantage of some of the staffing and other things. So if you can compress the schedule, you're going to save money in this game, and that's what we're doing here. So I just want to thank Scott and his team, and our team, the group that's been meeting, and all the designers and the people that have been, our project designers have, we've really kept the fast pace and kept us moving, and, and been making decisions quickly. And I think that that's how you save money doing this. So I'll open up the floor. Any other comments or questions?
I think part of the reason we've been able to make decisions quickly is we've had good designs, and we've had clear communication. And I really appreciate that.
Yep.
So a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve Amendment Number One to the Construction Management Agreement of Stillman Corporation in the amount of $320,000. That's a deduct. All of those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Scott.
Okay.
We'll be seeing you soon, I'm sure.
Yeah. They're getting tired of seeing us probably in the next couple of months.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Next up, back to six, we're going to go with GIS. Mark Barrett. And this is for CBIZ Evaluation Group LLC. And this is for an insurance appraisal. And we'll have Mark from GIS sort of explain to us why we're doing this.
Well, as you're aware, we've gone through a fairly lengthy audit process for property casualty insurance. And we kind of consider this the missing piece. The values that we're currently using on the policies were from the expiring policies. We're not, we're not sure where they arrived at, if they've been keeping up with inflationary increases. And also, we have the Opera House, the museum, and the old courthouse on reproduction costs instead of replacement costs. And that valuation is distinctly different. So we thought it'd be a good idea to start with a clean slate, with establishing new values. And then we could kind of keep a handle on them as they increase down the road. The CBIC was referred to us by KBIC. So there's no connection to us, but they're a very large valuation firm and has expertise in this area. So we just felt it'd be beneficial to get the insurance values squared away and get the audit process completed.
I can't remember up here for any amount of time that this has been done before. It's something that, like you said, it's the last piece we need to tie down our insurance, property casualty costs. I would also like to point out, I was sort of surprised, $1,850. That's a lot of money, but when you take it over how many buildings we have-
About $135 a building.
$135 a building. That's, that's a good deal.
I think so.
Yeah. And it'll give us, it'll give us good numbers to work off of for our insurance, and this will help us in the future going out to markets and other things. So I think it's a no-brainer. I'll open it up to the floor. Any questions from the other Commissioners? What had we been paying? Do you know?
For the appraisals had not been done before, so there's no comparison cost. But based on the recommendation from KBIC and the value of the cost for each building, we thought it was probably better, you'd probably pay more for a home appraisal.
So we had not done an appraisal on those buildings?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thanks. And as everybody knows, when you get insurance on your buildings, you have to put a value on what your house is worth, or whatever it's worth. And that's what we're trying to establish here, is just the values of these buildings based off market conditions, so we can then insure to that. And then it's verified and validated, so. So how were they, how were they, if we had not have done any type of appraisal, how were we setting, how were they setting the costs?
Well, the values were based on the expiring policy. And the cost according to each building is based on variable factors, type of constructions, so forth. And it is based on a replacement cost. So these, this is, again, is just to get us at a place going forward that we're comfortable that the values are accurate.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second for CBIZ Valuation Group LLC for insurance appraisal for Porter County government buildings in the amount of $11,850 to establish building values. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Mark.
Just to know that there's no commission.
And there's no commission on that either. Once again, holding, holding true to our mantra up here, right? Number seven, a request from a recently retired county employee to approve retiree health insurance coverage pursuant to the policy. What's this for, Scott?
So basically, our handbook requires that when a retiree wants to, wants to remain on our insurance and pay the cost, that the Commissioners must approve it pursuant to the policy, so.
So this is just COBRA approval? This is really-
It's retirement health insurance approval. It's okay, it's not exactly COBRA, but in the same vein.
Got it.
But they pay the cost.
Correct.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second to approve a request from a recently retired county employee to approve retiree health insurance coverage pursuant to the policy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number eight, we have an ordinance, oh, another ordinance. An ordinance recreating a non-reverting fund for receipts of proceeds from the Indiana Humanities Grant for the Porter County Memorial Opera House for $2,500. Scott McDonald, how are you today?
I'm well. How are you?
Good. What's this all about?
So we want a grant from Indiana Humanities to create an educational piece about the importance of Memorial Opera House in our community, basically reviewing the past, present, and future of the building, and to create presentations that we can take outside of the Opera House to the community, so that we're fulfilling our mission of helping the arts create community.
And we need a fund to put it in.
We do, because it's federal money.
We have a public hearing.
Yep, yeah, that's what I was, um, yeah.
I don't think everyone's going to-
So how does this work, Scott? We, we, how does this funding work now?
So we have to create a separate fund for it.
Right.
So we have to create our own line item for, our own fund and budget for this one grant.
So are you looking for the 20, are you going to be coming back for the 20, so we're-
We are matching the 2,500 through the Opera House Foundation.
Through the foundation.
Correct. But we just need the permission to spend.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you for clarifying.
I hope I didn't.
So what we're going to do here is, we're going to do a public hearing. And what that requires is, right now, we're going to suspend our Commissioners meeting. We're going to open up a public hearing. And what we'd like to do is, we'll give three opportunities, the for, three against, to come forward and speak- to come forward and speak either in favor or against this ordinance. So, what we'll do is, first call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance? Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance? Okay, anybody wishing to, first time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? And with that, the public hearing is now closed. We will open up the commissioners' meeting and I will open it up to the floor.
You've been doing a fantastic job securing...
Thank you. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion second on first reading to approve an ordinance creating a non-reverting fund for receipt of proceeds from the Indiana Humanities Grant for the Porter County Memorial Opera House in the amount of $2,500. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. And then we'll be doing the second reading at our next meeting. It'll be on the agenda.
Don't you have a show?
We do. We open Legally Blonde right after that commissioners' meeting, July 13th, and it's in rehearsal right now. We have two amazing dogs playing Bruiser, the little Chihuahua, so come visit them. The cast is doing a fantastic job. Our children's theater program also, this summer, they're doing Alice in Wonderland. That camp kicks up beginning of July and it is oversold right now. We had 40 slots available, we had 45 kids join and we've added mommy and me classes for the younger kids and those are starting to sell as well. So, really, really exciting things happening.
Keep plugging forward, my man.
Thank you.
Thanks Scott. Doing a great job out there.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the Sheriff's Department coming forward, Sheriff Reynolds. Looks like we have Deputy Chief Biggs and Edie, welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sheriff's had a national sheriff's conference this week, so.
So what we have here is, looks like we have a utility associates and this is a contract for body, police body and vehicle cameras for a total project amount of $468,000 over five years. So why don't you lead us into it, Jeff? Thank you.
Yeah, you know, our officers have been trying out different cameras and seeing which was the best one out there. And this Body One camera is, is one, it's really like a smartphone and it locks inside of a, you know, your shirt or your vest, so it's not like the type that just clips on. A lot of the departments were having issues with those popping off during like a, you know, a fight or something. BAPL PD has been in full use of those right now and they, you know, it's a really good camera. So, the one thing that Sheriff wanted to do too is also add the in-car cameras as well. So it'd be a camera in the front, camera in the back, and also be, we just found out when you called me yesterday, is this Body One camera, in-car cameras are going to have the ability to be license plate readers too. So scanning different, you know, license plates that are either, you know, in front, you know, stationary in front of them and it could be linked to any stolen vehicles or, you know, those are used actually quite a bit. So, it's another good feature to have. We want to use our drug seizure money for the two big installments, which is 117 for the first installment and then 117 at the, 117 actually gets it going, gets the cameras and then after, was it six or, six months or a year, you pay the other?
But within that same year. No, it'll be within that same year.
Within that same year, you spend another $117,000, which will all be drug seized money.
After they're all tested and ready to go and they know they're working properly, then the second payment.
And this is unlimited storage, right?
Unlimited storage, yep.
We finally beat that thing back, huh, the storage?
Yeah, that was good. That was good.
You know, under your guys' guidance, I mean, I think Scott has helped us out quite a bit with policies and ordinances and we've met with the prosecutor's office.
Yeah, I mean, I guess to kind of weave all this together a little bit for everyone is that, you know, we've, we've had several proposals from the Sheriff's Department for body cameras. I think they've evolved over time as far as different vendors and different, where we are with technology, because we're always in that circumstance where whatever we purchase today is almost obsolete before you get it. And then I think in the body camera world, it's been especially fast and I think we finally got to a place where, in this particular proposal, one, we have a local PD utilizing them and so we have some idea of how those are working out. Number two, the unlimited storage, I can't say enough about that issue in of itself. It relieves a lot of inherent tension on administering the program based upon a fairly convoluted state statute that is relatively new as the state kind of plods its way through this process, which isn't easy. So the unlimited storage obviously gives us some, a lot of runway as we deal with those issues. And I think also, for people that have been paying attention, we have been doing quite a bit of work at 911 and so to make sure that this is compliant with or compatible with the direction 911 is going and the direction of dispatching and things like you brought up, reading license plates, having the GPS within the cameras, it's all kind of dovetailed together. I think the Sheriff's Department has done a great job as far as taking the direction from the commissioners' office, finding the funding, finding a permanent funding location for it. Once we get past the initial purchase, we're looking at $58,500 a year in maintenance. I can see that you guys have had some preliminary discussions with the council and that's looking like it's going into a permanent line item into your general fund. You guys are on their agenda coming up.
Yep.
Obviously, as part of our normal protocol, our, the commissioners, I would request the commissioners' vote today to be contingent upon the council approving the funding, obviously.
Absolutely.
But there are a lot of complicated but very good things coming out of this as it relates to 911, the GPS, potential to be reading license plates, having the cameras. We've had several meetings with myself and the Sheriff's Department, us and the prosecutor's office to kind of work out some of the tangled web of how these things are going to be moving around. I know that we're going to be doing some things, we're anticipating some FOIA requests that will be coming, which is completely normal and we're trying to figure out the best way to streamline that. So, people that are able to request those are able to get those in an efficient manner. So I appreciate the Sheriff's Department having all of those meetings and having all of their staff there to work through those issues. So, you know, this is a good contract, I think it's a good product and the interface with 911 couldn't be better. I think this proposal, unlike some of the other proposals, there's a Wi-Fi booster in the trunk, this, this is about three or four football fields around the car, there's a four-second delay as this video coverage is, or this video footage is getting uploaded to the cloud. If an officer happens to get farther away from the vehicle, as soon as he's within range of that vehicle, it's uploaded again. A lot of things that were somewhat bothersome in some of the earlier proposals, as, again, as these things continue to evolve, have been taken care of in this, in this situation. So, I think between the funding, the 911 and just the actual better body cameras as they're getting more and more efficient and more and more bells and whistles put on them, I think this is a good timing and I think the whole process is finally put together.
Well, I would just like to say that I think that, I know the Sheriff's Department is, is trying to get up with all the new technology to keep our officers safe.
Absolutely.
But I think what's even more, or just as exciting, is what's happening to our 911 department and what this is going to allow, I mean, the people that handle our first responders in that room, when we get all this technology put together, it's, it's really going to streamline a lot of things. It's going to be much more visual, you're going to be able to see because of GPS where these vehicles are going, you're not going to have to be on the radio all the time. I mean, this, this investment that we're making over the last several years towards our 911 directive and our first responders is huge. This is just another part of that that we're, we're putting in here to consolidate it all. So, I'm not only excited for the Sheriff's Department being able to get these things that they've wanted for a while, but also to be patient with us and let us get our timing and everything put together to where we can really roll out a good call center and, and really give our employees out there all the new bells and whistles. And this is a big step for the county. We're going from a, you know, almost an analog type system to digital and, I mean, crazy digital type of stuff. So, this is a big step for our county, but I think with all the things that are going out there in the world today, we have to make sure that we have the right equipment, the people are trained properly to take on anything that could happen in our community. And I, I'm, I know this has been a big move on our, from us, for the Board of Commissioners. The 911 center is at the top of our list right now and I'm, I'm just very excited to see all this coming together and everybody working together to get it to where it needs to get. That's what it's all about. So, thank you for being patient with us, too.
Yeah, we appreciate it. You know, we, and we, you know, we got a, we had a great working relationship right now with the 911 center.
Yep.
So, trying these different things and doing, you know, different dispatching has been pretty exciting for everybody.
Yep. Well, thank you, Chief.
Yeah, and I think too, one of the things, you mentioned what's going on out there in the world, there's a lot of trust breakdown between police and, and people, citizens. And I think this will go a long way, you guys bringing this forward and showing that you want to be held accountable and...
Right.
Maybe build a little of that trust back. We have great officers.
Yep.
Yeah, doesn't, only just help benefit our officers, but the people we serve in, in the county as well.
Yep.
Well, I, you know, I think it also, it also adds, you know, a verified record that, of what actually occurred when there was, you know, the accusations started. But, this is a lot of money, so, you know, I, I, I have comfort, you know, I can support it because of the drug seizure money, you know, backing it up, which I think is fitting. But I hope, hope all the officers understand, this is a huge investment on our part. That's a lot of money, half a million dollars. And I hope, and, and taking care of the equipment, because, you know, as, as you, as you know, Jeff, is that, you know, most departments don't have this ability.
Right.
And, and it's typically, it's almost always because of the cost. So, good luck with it and, and I hope that we reap, you know, positive benefits from it.
Absolutely, thank you.
Any other comments from anybody else? I'll open up the floor and entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion contingent upon council funding.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
So we have a motion to approve contingent on council approval.
The council approving funding.
Yep.
Absolutely.
So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. And then, oh, so that's...
That's a public hearing too.
Okay, so the next thing on the agenda, we have an ordinance revising, ordinance 3.76, and this is for videotape duplication fee is what that is. So we have to amend this ordinance to allow for the videotape fee to, to be able to be charged. And is that part of the FOIA request?
Correct.
So when people come and get a FOIA request, they're going to be charged a fee for that FOIA request. So that's, this is just part of the housekeeping that we're, we're doing to clean that up. So what we're going to do here, yeah, Scott, I'm going to let you explain this a little more because I don't have the ordinance in front of me.
So pursuant to the new state statute, which is dealing with what we were talking about, dealing with the body cameras, a public agency may charge a fee of up to $150 for a request. Those funds uniquely in this statute for body cameras, because they passed this, they, we used to call it the videotape duplication fee. Now this is more called a law enforcement recordings fee, okay, to kind of get us a little bit more into the current timeframe. So, this amendment is mirroring that state statute. And to be clear, the money that would be produced from this fee is actually put into the state statute of what it can be used for. And that is to purchase cameras and other equipment for use in connection with the agency's law enforcement recording program, for training concerning law enforcement recording, or to defray the expenses of storing, producing and copying law enforcement recordings. So, basically the fee, whatever, whenever this fee is collected, it's going back to support whether it's training or the body cameras themselves, so. And this is all pursuant to the state statute and so that's why we are proposing to amend this particular statute, our, our particular ordinance.
If I could too, you know, the, the 150, you know, from my understanding, if we break, if a camera breaks, we're going to have to pay $600 to replace that camera. And so the fee, the 150 fee, you know, seems like maybe a lot, but, you know, to replace those, like you said, take care of that equipment, there's going to be times where we just, they're going to get broke because people are, you know, don't like us, want to fight us. So, you know, that fee is going to help replenish those cameras.
Well, and the idea of the fee to also to kind of, because 150 may sound a little startling, but it's, when the state, when the state and the state legislature was putting this together, they were taking into consideration, for instance, this is, as Commissioner Biggs pointed out, this is also almost a half a million dollar investment in the first five years to get just the equipment and the maintenance. That's before we talk about the administrative costs at the Sheriff's Department, we're going to have to have employees dealing with this, we're going to have to have employees dealing with FOIA requests, we're going to have to deal with the, the actual media component of providing those things, we're going to have to deal with some of the particulars of the state statute would allow certain people an opportunity to view the actual recording without necessarily having a copy, so we have to provide that time and place. And so, there's quite a bit of expenses that go into administering this program. So, that's the basis behind, or the logic behind the state statute and the state legislature is setting the speed at a cap of $150 because, due to those costs that everyone, that all cities, towns and counties would incur and what they go into that program.
So, I guess what we'll do here is, we're going to pause the commissioners' meeting again here, we're going to open up a public hearing and we're going to do the same process that we did earlier in the meeting. So, with that in mind, we're going to give, anybody wishing to come forward and speak against this ordinance revision 3.76, first call. Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance revision 3.76. Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance revision 3.76. And now we'll move, anybody wishing to, first call, anybody wishing to speak in favor of this revision, ordinance revision 3.76. Anybody, second call, anybody wishing to speak in favor of this revision of ordinance 3.76. Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of ordinance revision 3.76. And with that, this public hearing is closed. We'll now open it up to the commissioners for a first reading, first reading.
A motion to approve our first reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve an ordinance 3.76 revision for videotape duplication fee, first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. We'll be back on the next meeting to follow up with the second reading.
Okay.
Go get them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have on the agenda Porter EMS, Anne Brandle, but Anne is homesick, I believe, and cannot make this meeting, so we've booted her to the next meeting in July. So we'll move on. Next, we have Gina Kennedy, Assistant Director for 911. We're, this is regarding Motorola. This is for CallWorks contract in the amount of $893,680.69. This, the first payment will be 111,836.18 on January 19th. I also wanted to point out in our meetings here, I, I don't know how many of you folks come to our meetings all the time, but we've started to add dollars and things to our meeting agenda, so it makes it a little easier for everybody to sort of follow along with what we're approving here. So we've also added those dollar amounts on the, on the screen too, so just wanted to point that out. So, I think we have Gina here and then Jay Burrow. Hi Jay.
Hello.
So, take us away.
We are looking to sign a contract here with Motorola for a new 911... We are looking to sign a contract here with Motorola for a new 911 software. We have entertained several, two different, we've entertained Motorola and Airbus.
Airbus.
Airbus. And we invited the county IT and our employees to come to the presentations. We have decided to go with the Motorola with consultation from our county IT department. And we feel that that is the best option for the citizens of Porter County. It is sole sourced only through Motorola, so it is up to them. And it has some features for us. Right now, when we receive a 911 call in the 911 Center, the operator does have to just answer the calls as they come in. This has an integrated map in it where if all of those calls are coming from here and we suddenly get a 911 call in another part of the county, the operator has the ability to choose that call from the screen instead of just answering in the way that they're coming in currently.
Okay.
Anything that you would like to?
No, I, I think between that and then some of the integration with the new software that's coming out in cell phones you see today where it's giving a better pinpoint accuracy of where the cell caller is, instead of just triangulating the towers, it's actually given within a few feet. So as that, those features roll out, that's automatically coming with this. Part of the contract also is a hardware refresh. So I'm not going to sit here and say after five years, this hardware is going to be brand new and it's going to keep, you know, their servers, there's a lot of equipment that goes in. So right around the five-year mark, we're going to replace, do a, a nice uplift in a way, as, as best as we can to redo all of that. And there's going to be no additional cost that come to the county. So you're kind of fixed here for the next 10 years. It goes in line a lot with the radio system as far as kind of, once everything's in place, your, your costs go away and it's, the, the maintenance is all built in. So what you see is what you get.
I would just like to clarify for everyone in the room. I know Gina mentioned this is software, but this is really a whole new phone system for 911. And it is much, 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 much different than a typical phone system that you're thinking about.
Yes.
It's, it's very detailed. I mean, right now, the county's phone system that we're currently on right now is past end of life. I mean, it's way past end of life. And once again, we're moving from analog phone system to a digital phone system. And this, this is, obviously it needs to be done. It's, it's a little late in coming, in my opinion, but we're, we're stepping up today and we're, we're going to make it right. You're going to be seeing other contracts coming through over the next couple of months on other things that we're going to be upgrading. We want to make sure that we get all this done. At the same time, we're in the middle of designing a new call center. So as this new equipment goes in, we're also able to design for it properly to make sure that, that the room's set up correctly. Because, you know, it's, like I said earlier, this is going to be a different room. You're going to be going into it and there's going to be a lot of streaming, there's going to be a lot of things going on in this room that this, this technology is going to allow us to do. And this is where it's all heading. We're just becoming relevant here and we're excited about it with our new towers and all the other stuff, the infrastructure that we've put in. This is now all the, now we're trimming the tree here and, but it's expensive stuff and, but it needs to be done, so. But I just wanted to, to comment, and it's not just software, it's, it's the whole,
Phone system.
The whole phone system that will give us another 10 years of, of life. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Because we're going to a, to different software and a different phone system, what kind of commitment is there going to be on our end to train our dispatchers?
Motorola in the contract will have eight days of training. And they will actually have somebody when we do the cut over from our current system with us for 24 hours to assist with any thing that needs to be dealt with in that. We will train all of the people before we implement it.
We always plan for the cuts realizing it's not just an eight-by-five, 24/7. There's usually three different shifts that you have to work through. We don't want to train somebody and just pass it off to that person to train the next. So there's a, Callworks University, which actually gives, gives them a feel and look of the system before they even see it, before it's even deployed. Once it's deployed, you'll have the training on site and then during cut over, we'll be there throughout.
Compared to what we have now, is there more activity with this system, you know, as far as dispatcher goes, will she or he have to be paying attention to more activity coming in?
Um, no, not, not really.
I would say almost less, less clicks to get, to get what they need to do.
Oh, that's good.
There are some other features. Currently, we have to, when we have a 911 call that we might need to replay right away, we have to log into another system to do this. This system will give the operator the ability actually to hear the call coming before they actually answer that call. We do get 911 calls that are hangups where we, you know, we do call them back and the person, this could give us, could help us with the law enforcement end where we heard something before we actually answered it that we would know to send an, an officer, whereas if they say everything is okay currently right now, we, we don't do that.
So it makes it more efficient?
It makes it more efficient. There is also, they have the ability to, if, if we received 911 call and we received one a week ago, they have the ability to look at that information from that call that we did not, we don't currently have.
Okay. Thank you.
Scott, why don't you maybe give a little update here as to how we plan on paying for all this?
So we are, this, this proposal the commissioners have in front of us is a lease that would be paid out through, currently planned to be paid out through 2027. The monthly, the first year's payment is, you'll see on the screen, is 111,836.18. That first payment comes in January, February of 2019. The commissioners are planning on approving this contract that we would then place that into our proposed budgets for the council to consider at their budget sessions in 2018. And the commissioners would be looking to add it to the line item that we are currently utilizing to pay for the 911 upgrades, the towers and the councils and so on that we currently have in our budget. So we believe we're going to be able to move some things around in the commissioners' budget in order to absorb this without having to get additional funds from the council. And so that would be in our proposal for, in our budget session, or excuse me, in our budget submission to the council. And then we have, I believe, two years of no interest. And then we start having interest at 4.05% as we start to go into years three through 10, which gives the county some options as we move forward in those decisions. So that's the way that the commissioner's office, if approving this, would be approaching funding of this lease payment.
Okay. Thank you.
Scott, is there any, can we, if we chose to pay that off?
There's no prepayment penalty.
No prepayments.
There's no prepayment penalty. So if we found ourselves in that position, we're able to do that. Which, and I, just to add, this amends our current agreement and dovetails into it. So in other words, this is, this is mirroring what we did previously to do the 911 upgrades, which was.
Towers.
$5.5 million or so, in that range. So same no interest for a few years and then we go from there.
Any other questions from the board? We can entertain.
I think we're going to be able to respond to people more quickly and more accurately and get to them where they are faster. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Motorola Callworks contract in the amount of $893,680.69. The first payment will be 111,836.18 on January of 2019. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. We're starting to march towards a new call center. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience. We're, we're getting there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
You're welcome.
Next up is Altonary, Portage Township Assessor. This is for assessment analytics. It's a contract for cyclical reassessment. Good morning, Alta.
Good morning, how are you?
Good.
This is a, a, a commercial reassessor.
Oh, hi, Scott. Hi. So what do you got for us, Alta?
Yeah, I give you a contract for, I need to renew it. He does the physical reassessment of our commercial properties, just in Portage Township in South Haven, Good Doon, City of Portage. I do share him with the county, but I'm the one that's mostly going to employ him. So it's mostly my bill. And it'll become an, my reassessment fund on a yearly basis.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners?
He's, he's worked for us in the past.
Yes, he's currently, yes. In the last four years, he was my appraiser.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for assessment analytics, change of contract for cyclical reassessment for the Portage Township Assessor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now the work begins, right? Thank you. Next up, facilities, Matt Steckley. Come on forward, Matt. Got a couple of things, you're, got some quotes on?
Yes, sir. I'll be quick. Commissioners, you and I have discussed this in the past. Actually, this is something that's been going on probably for over a year, year and a half. Finally, it's taken fruition. There is a specific department at the JDC that is not functional in terms of the way it's laid out. So the, there is a woman that accepts payments whenever, due to a judge extracting or requesting payment. It's kind of in the open and there's a lot of back and forth traffic and they, there's doors locked here and there's doors locked here. It, it's chaos. So what this small renovation does is basically opens it up, secures it A, so we can take payments securely and she doesn't have to worry. And then it opens up a, a new hallway eliminating all these closed, secure doors. So it's, it's just a step in the right direction to really ease something that's very simple to fix, but it's been an issue for a long time. So I did walkthroughs, I put the scope together, all three vendors, I did walkthroughs with Larson Danielson. I'm asking that they be awarded apples to apples. Coming down to it, they were the lowest at $24,920.
Thanks, Matt. Just to give everybody a little bit of housekeeping here, the JDC is the Juvenile Detention Center. That's the building out on two. This request came to us about a year and a half ago and they were thinking that they had some money in an account for the roof repairs and they found out later on that the, the money had been all spent for that roof, roof work. So we were just waiting to price it out. So this, this dollar amount here will be coming out of the commissioners' budget.
Facilities budget.
That's coming out of facilities budget. I'm sorry, Matt, your budget.
Not still yours.
Yeah?
Still ours.
So, still ours, I guess. But I just wanted to work through that and let people know that first they came, they thought they would be able to do it with their money and then they didn't have the money and then we sat down and worked with them and this is, this is the end result.
And Allison Cox, the director over there is really, really happy and definitely said thank you. Yes.
So that's a little bit of the, the story on that, so I'll put that to the board for any action.
Motion to approve.
Larson Danielson?
Yes, your approval is, is his recommendation, yep. We have a motion and a second for Larson Danielson for the Juvenile Detention Center Office renovation. We have three quotes. The low responsible bidder is Larson Danielson, $24,920. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Then you have another JDC Juvenile Detention Center generator. Why don't you give us an update on that?
So we have a main central generator that obviously is needed for that facility, being all of the doors and communication, security, everything needs to have power redundancy and backup. This main generator sprung a pretty large leak in the radiator and we're not talking a, a tiny house generator, this is a very large system. Radiator was special order custom. It actually is scheduled to come in next week and finally get installed, but this is on the agenda for you to approve. A lot of groundwork to get to this part, but three, three vendors invited, Lionheart, who we're under contract with currently, patent Caterpillar, and then Cummins, Cummins didn't respond at all, though multiple attempts. But the two quotes that I was able to receive, asking that Lionheart be awarded the lowest at $21,792.
And I just want to thank you, Matt, for going out and getting three bids, even though we had an agreement, we could have used Lionheart.
For sure.
We went out and got more bids just to keep them honest and it looks like they came through. So thank you.
Motion to approve Lionheart at $21,792.
We have a motion and a second for Lionheart for the Juvenile Detention Center Generator Repair at $21,792. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Go get them. Next up, our new Highway Department Supervisor, Rich Sexton, along with Jim Polarek, our assistant.
Hello, Jan.
Thank you.
Hello.
That was a quick drive back.
Right.
Lower Michigan.
Build a fire, why?
So what do you got here? We got an accr, we got an request for an additional appropriation, Fund 1176 Motor Vehicles in the amount of $50,000 to account 1130 overtime. This is additional overtime for snow plowing and salting, just getting caught up on that. Anything you want to add, Rich?
Not really. We just, we, you know, had a tough end of the winter and that's where this, we just need some more money so we can stop spending out of the hourly budget for the overtime. And we're going to, you know, we're in road building season, so we're going to have some overtime there and, well, and winter's coming eventually, unfortunately, so we're going to need some more, for overtime for that. Yeah. Just by looking at the numbers, by the end of January, with all the snow we already burned through all this budget for the whole year for overtime.
So we were out of the gate in January.
Yeah, we had another, it was February, I believe, where we plowed snow for nine days straight. Doesn't take long. It came through there.
And weekends and evenings, too, with most of it was, so.
Correct.
All right. Open it up to the board. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a request for additional appropriation, Fund 1176 Motor Vehicles in the amount of $50,000 to account 1130 overtime. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. And then we have another additional for 11, again, Motor Vehicles in the amount of $62,587 to account 2362 for bituminous. And this is a reimbursement from IDOT for road damage to Dahlke Road last year. So why don't you give us, everybody, what happened there? I think some of the state damaged it or?
Well, we, the highway engineering back when this project took place was, there was an unofficial detour is what they made Dahlke Road. And I think it's like 923 North runs into Dahlke. It's an L section up there off of 149 between 149 and 875 North. And they beat it up pretty good. We, that will not be an unofficial detour as far as I'm concerned because it is just a chip and seal road. This additional is appropriation, it's just a reimbursement, like it says, from NDOT to put some more, some asphalt on that road and make it new again. We'll probably do, I'm assuming we'll do some widening there because it is pretty narrow on the actual Dahlke at 875.
So basically the state's giving us money, we need to get it into our, into your budget. So you're here and then after that, you go to the council for the actual additional.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for additional appropriation of 1176 Motor Vehicles in the amount of $62,587 to account 2362 bituminous. And again, this is a reimbursement from IDOT for road damage to Dahlke Road last year caused by an unofficial detour. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thanks for fighting back on that, guys.
Thank you very much.
Real quick, Rich. This morning I asked Rich to inform the other two commissioners to check on the status of 149, which has been closed for several months from Route 6 in between Route 6 and Route 20. Rich advised me this morning that we can, they're calling for opening of that road June 23rd at 6:30 PM.
6:00 PM, yes, sir.
Can't come soon enough.
I, yes, I agree. I live on 200 West, I know that. So, little, one forty-nine.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Go get them. All right, we're gonna move to plan commission, Bob Thompson. Good morning, Bob.
Morning.
Uh, we got a couple of second reading, oh, second readings here, so, um, first of all, we have, first one on the docket, we have a rezone, uh, this is a P-two Parks and Recreation District to I-N Industrial District. The petitioner is the Porter County Redevelopment Commission, um, second reading. So I'll open it up to the floor, um, for the commissioners, this is second reading.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second. We have a motion as second for rezone, uh, second reading, uh, from, uh, P-two Parks and Recreation District to I-N Industrial District. And again, the petitioners for the Porter County Redevelopment Commission, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next on here is a rezone R-two, uh, medium density, single family residential district to CH, which is high intensity commercial district. Uh, this is petitioner Bennett Storage, Inc., uh, and this is the second reading. Um, and I think if everybody remembers, that was for the, uh, we had a lengthy discussion at our last meeting and, and, uh, worked through all those, uh, issues. Yep, Bob?
Yeah, please note that the attorney representing Bennett's did submit a written commitment for, um, approval. Attached with the ordinance on that, Attorney McClure and myself looked over that.
That included the privacy fencing and?
Correct.
Yes, and the buffer and, yep. Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion as second for rezone, uh, for the Bennett Storage, Inc. is the petitioner from R-two medium density, single family residential district to CH high intensity commercial district. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. And then the last one is a re- request to vacate the unapproved right-of-way alley from Lucretia Street in Boom Grove and the alley from five hundred South Boom Grove. The petitioner is William Dane, this is second reading. Do you have anything?
I don't have anything, Kathy's telling me to make sure I speak into the microphone.
Yeah, you have that, yeah. Hopefully that's the one that doesn't crackle. I think we all remember this from the last meeting too.
Yeah, this hasn't been used as an alley in years.
Yep.
I've been out there.
Yep.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion as second to request to vacate, uh, the unapproved right-of-way alley from Lucretia Street in Boom Grove and the alley from five hundred South in Boom Grove. Uh, again, the petitioner is William Dane, this is second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Uh, now we're gonna move to highway, uh, Bob, highway engineering, Bob Thompson, and we got a lot to do here, so hang on. First one, Mary Construction Point, go tell us what you got, Bob.
This is amendment number one to, bridge number one thirty-five. Bridge one thirty-five is in the city of Portage, it's on Old Porter Road over Salt Creek. And this amendment, um, is to do some environmental analysis, they have to do some wetland delineation there, because we need to file for a permit for construction in the floodway, even though we're not gonna be in the floodway, uh, in the channel per se to do construction, since we're removing the deck, we still have to file for a permit for construction.
We still have to file for a permit, even though we're not working in the right-of-way?
Uh, we, well, we're not working in the channel, but we still have to do the construction of floodway permit with DNR.
That's a tough one to swallow.
Yeah.
We tried. We tried. Any questions? We, just so the board knows, when we, when this first came up, uh, we, we tried permitting with this without having to go for this. We, at the time, we did not feel that we would be, um, really creating any issues out there and, and, uh?
Just replacing the deck.
Yeah, exactly, we're just replacing the deck here, is all we're doing, so, uh, I don't think we have any way out of it though, because they've, they've asked for that. So that's why there's a change order to this, because we went in without doing it, we were gonna, we felt we could do it without, so, um, is this one of the bridges on the capital plan? Okay. Any questions from the board?
Uh, motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion as second for amendment number one to the owner engineer agreement for the Porter County Bridge, one thirty-five, that's bridge designed for superstructure replacement, not to exceed two, not to exceed two hundred one thousand eight hundred sixty dollars. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, United Consulting, it's another bridge.
Yes, United Consulting is doing our bridge inspections currently for the, um, next phase and we also have an annual agreement with them to do work for us on such cases like this. These two bridges that are right next to each other need maintenance work on it and until we're set up staff-wise, we ask them to develop the drawings and specifications and also do permitting for us since it's gonna be construction in the floodway. Uh, the first bridge that's up is Bridge one fifty-two, this is Wagner Road over the Little Calumet River, we've already done corings on it, the, the deck is good, the only thing we need to do is mow the deck and put a new concrete overlay over it. So, um, they are going to be developing this, I should back up on that. Wagner Road is also steel underneath and we need to clean the steel off and also clean the rockers on it and repaint. We're also going to be putting in what, uh, a new abutment on it to try to prevent stormwater from going down in like it has in the past and the joints onto these rockers.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion as second for agreement for Bridge one fifty-two Wagner Road over Little Calumet River, beam painting and deck rehabilitation not to exceed ninety thousand one hundred dollars. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Uh, United Consulting again, and this is for Shorewood, correct?
Yes, this is Bridge two zero eight, Shorewood Drive over Lake Louise and Shorewood Forest subdivision. We did a bridge overlay on this back in ninety-four or ninety-five, it was one of my projects I did when I was down there as a system engineer. The new overlay that was put on it has delaminated, um, and we need to go in and replace it. Again, we did corings on it, the deck is good and solid, it's just a matter of mowing out this and putting a new overlay plus fixing the coping that, um, is on the northeast corner on this, so that way, uh, concrete isn't falling.
And I believe this is a bridge that?
Both.
Boats go under.
Correct.
And so we have some?
Concrete falling.
Crack, cracking and spalling of some concrete underneath.
Correct.
So this is something that really, it's a very heavily used road, a bridge.
Which, I should mention, we probably will be, for both of these bridges, be, uh, requesting sealed bids for these probably in January or February is what they told us. We're thinking so, we're gonna be set for construction on both of these bridges in April of next year. And a lot of this is due to the permitting requirements that we have to go through.
Yep, yep.
And these amounts sound like and are a lot, but it would grow, that, no, those numbers would grow very quickly if we weren't doing this maintenance.
Right.
And these are big bridges too.
Exactly.
These are some of our bigger bridges.
They are.
That we have out there, so they're not like your Little County Road Bridge or, these are big span bridges, they're long, um, have a lot of decking on them and, and, and very, uh, high traffic areas too, so, um, uh, just part of the work getting our bridges back up to snuff again, um, it's gonna take us a little while, but, uh, we're, we're up to the task, so, uh, open up the floor, any comments?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion as second for United Consulting, agreement for Bridge two zero eight, Shorewood Forest, Shorewood Drive over Lake Louise, deck rehabilitation not to exceed sixty-eight thousand dollars. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next, we have S E H, um, I guess I can probably talk a little bit about this, because this is, uh, something that I've been working on, uh, with Commissioner Blaney a little bit here. Um, we have a proposal here from S E H, um, to develop a design for the improvement of the intersection at Division Road and State Road Forty-nine. Uh, task one will be in the amount of twenty-five thousand eight hundred dollars and task two will not exceed ten thousand five hundred dollars. Um, this is, uh, as we've been working on the expo upgrade, uh, we've also, I think all of us commissioners and probably council members know that, uh, because of the addition to Pratt, uh, and using about a hundred fifty to a hundred seventy-five trucks a day going down Division Road, uh, it's caused a lot of, uh, traffic concerns and, uh, it's really, uh, beating up our roads out there quite a bit. Um, we, when Pratt opened, there was a stakeholder meeting with the IDOT, a lot of people came out, we talked about the intersection. I know the state has been working on some things on the forty-nine side. Um, what we're looking at doing here is trying to figure out a way that we can widen, uh, Division Road up near forty-nine, both on the east side and the west side by Aldi's, Aldi's. Uh, I have met with the city of Alperazo and have talked to them about, uh, uh, help sharing in the cost of this, uh, because they have, uh, Aldi's is in the city of Alperazo and so their truck traffic, uh, tears that intersection up quite a bit too, uh, and they've been very receptive to those discussions. Um, so, uh, now what we're trying to do is come up with a design, uh, that the state of Indiana will, uh, accept. If we go in this direction, what will happen is that intersection will become wider on the county side, which will allow the trucks to turn left onto Pratt and give them a lot more room, uh, to turn. Uh, we really couldn't go south because of the electric poles and everything that were put right up against the road, uh, so we really feel like we have a solution here to a problem that is long overdue, that we need to fix. And I think, uh, for the safety of our communities and also, uh, coming at a good time to upgrade the expo center and everything, I don't think that the timing could be better. So, uh, that's sort of the skinny on what we're trying to do there, um, but I think it's, it's something that needs to be done and also looking at some of the preliminary costs, um, I don't think it's gonna be a jugular thing to be able to do that. We're also looking at the state of Indiana's, uh, reconfiguring their community crossings grant program and there may be even an opportunity here where we could share with VAPL on the community crossing grant and even get the state to come in and pay some more money too. So we're, we're trying to screw down the screws here a little bit to see who's all gonna come in and, and, uh, put some money out on the table for us before we get it there. So I think it's a great project and, uh, I know all the other commissioners have gotten calls about things out there too, so, um, just wanna throw it open to the floor. Any questions? I know that's a, that Division Road is Laura and I's division of our districts.
We get few calls.
We get few calls, so, and I, and the city of Appleton, they get calls too. So I think we're all in the same boat here, so let's fix it.
Yep.
So.
And hopefully, I think, where did I read it? Forty-nine right there is in pretty bad shape, but I think in twenty nineteen, they're fixing the pavement there too.
When we met with the state of Indiana, with the highway department, uh, they, they were planning this year to move all the signals and everything this year, but I think it's gonna get pushed back to next year when we can sort of maybe do this project all at once, because for their new traffic signals, sort of interesting, they got these hockey pucks now that they actually put in the asphalt and that's what signals to the, the, I know, I get into this stuff, but it signals to the, the traffic thing, so if we don't, we don't have to dig those out and, and put them back in when we do all the paving and everything. So I think the state now is gonna back up and we're gonna try to time this all together where we can go in and do all the work at once and, and get it done right to where there's not a lot of traffic disruption either. Because it's a very busy road in the morning, as Vicki knows, coming to work every day, so, uh, it's.
And it is in bad shape, the people who are complaining have legitimate complaints, but it's coming, it's on the docket. The state plans these projects out years ahead of time, so.
Yep.
We're here finally.
So with that, I'll make the motion to approve the contract for S E H of Indiana.
Second.
We have a motion as second for S E H of Indiana, a proposal to develop a design for the improvements of intersection at Division Road and State Road Forty-nine. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next, we have a M O U, memorandum of understanding between the Porter County Highway Department and the Porter County Develop, Department of Development and Stormwater Management. And what this M O U is, is as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, how our highway department is starting to work with our stormwater department much closer. What this is, is a document that solidifies that and, and, and spells out the boundaries of how these two departments will work together with regards to funding and, and other things. And I also think it will give clarification to the council too, on how this stuff is supposed to go back and forth, so everybody has an idea of, of who's on first on these things. So this actually is a M O U that formalizes that agreement that allows people to know who's paying for what, so there's not a lot of this. So I think, uh, this is just some housekeeping that I think will, uh, again, create some good best practices, so.
And real quick, it's just paving of, uh, paving of bridge decks and culvert purchases. So the stormwater fund, uh, uh, bridge deck pavement work from five hundred, five hundred feet to each side, uh, from the abutment walls and if there's a stormwater, we'll purchase culverts that are larger than twenty-four inches in diameter on highway projects. So just solidifies that.
Bridge fund will take care of the paving.
So the bridge fund, highway.
Stormwater will take care of that.
So now we'll all know what bucket to pull that money out of and there's a criteria for each one to, to, to audit. So, um, and I would also say that I think as the relationship between these departments develop over time, I would see that M O U coming back here to be updated and upgraded as we move along. So I see this as sort of a working document going forward, so, um, uh, I just wanna make sure that, uh, we, we all understand that too, so.
Motion to approve the memorandum.
Second. We have a motion as second for a memorandum of understanding between the Hy, Porter County Highway Department and the Porter County Department of Development, Stormwater Management, uh, project cooperation use of funds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Uh, next, we have Bridge one sixty-eight, another bridge, uh, Brummett Road, uh, over the Little Cow River Bridge replacement. Uh, Bob, what do you got?
Uh, this is definitely a bridge that needs to be replaced. We have received federal construction funding for this to be released in twenty twenty-two. Matter of fact, temp, right now, uh, NDOT has this on, uh, their list for, um, releasing in January of twenty twenty-two for construction only. To get to that point, we are going to be paying for the engineering design out of that, out of the bridge fund ourselves, um, because of the urgency this bridge needs, um, to get replaced. We wanted it to be replaced at, as, as soon as possible with this federal funding, so, and, and, and NDOT has accommodated with us. Mike Navatney, Rich Sexton and I reviewed a number of proposals on this, or letters of interest on this, and we would like to, um, give a recommendation to the commissioners that USI Consultants be the, uh, consulting engineer, design firm for this Bridge one sixty-eight. And if you have any questions, notice Brandon Arnold, um, is with USI, he's right behind me in the audience. They are also doing work on Bridge one twenty-sixth currently and Mike and I have been very pleased with the cooperation with USI and Brandon Arnold on that bridge, so we would like to recommend USI again for Bridge one sixty-eight.
So Bob, the federal fund will be available in twenty twenty-two. You're suggesting that we expedite things along, that we go ahead and pay for it and be reimbursed, uh, at a later date by the feds?
No, we're gonna be paying the engineering fees all ourselves out of the bridge fund. The reimbursement comes, or I should say?
Construction.
We will, at the construction time, when this is let, um, we will be sending in that the, uh, twenty percent of the construction costs.
Out of the, uh, what we spend on the engineering costs?
No.
That's separate.
That's separate.
So that doesn't count toward what we spend for an engineer, doesn't count for?
No, we only, just to get this going and approved, we only filed for the construction.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion as second for staff recruitment, uh, for you, is it USI? USI Consultants over, uh, for providing engineering services for Bridge one sixty-eight. Um, we will see an agreement back here at our next meeting, probably, correct, Bob, or can we?
We still have to go through the, um, since we're doing the federal process on this with the federal money, we have to go through NDOT to get the contracts going, but we'll eventually be back here with, uh, NDOT form.
Okay, thanks. All those in? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Bob, we got through it. Now let's go get some bridges done.
Yes.
Man. Next, we have Health Department. We have a resolution honoring Keith Latta, services the Health Department Director. Morning, David.
I was on the agenda because we thought Martin had a funeral to work. He's figured out a way not to have to do that.
Oh.
So Martin, the chairman of the Health Department, is working.
Okay.
So he'll take over, thank you.
We'll let Martin read the resolution, too, because I'm losing my voice.
To read the resolution, okay. Yeah, we wanted to speak in support of the resolution for Keith here, and if you'd like me to read that?
Please.
I need to speak into the mic for the?
Yeah, just, it moves all over the place.
Okay. It's titled, "An Appreciation Resolution: Whereas Mr. Keith Latta Will Be Retiring From His Position As The Porter County Health Department Administrator On June 30, 2018", and that has been extended to July 1st, or, oh, June, July 6th. Whereas Mr. Keith Latta has served as both a sanitarian and as the department administrator for the past 44 years, and whereas Mr. Keith Latta did during his service with the Porter County Health Department faithfully and conscientiously discharge his duties and unselfishly put forth his talents and knowledge in service to the citizens of Porter County, and whereas the Porter County Board of Commissioners is desirous of publicly and officially expressing its gratitude and appreciation to Mr. Keith Latta, and in so doing, acknowledging and memorializing the dedicated and committed service of Mr. Keith Latta as both a sanitarian and as the department administrator for the past 44 years. Therefore, be it resolved by the Porter County Board of Commissioners that Mr. Keith Latta deserves the grateful acknowledgement and appreciation of the Porter County Board of Commissioners and the citizens of Porter County, and the public recognition bestowed by this resolution, and that Mr. Keith Latta should be, and is hereby commended, recognized and acknowledged for his dedication, commitment, and service as a sanitarian and the department administrator for the past 44 years, all of which having been resolved by the Porter County Board of Commissioners this 19th day of June 2018.
Thank you.
I will make a motion to approve.
We have a motion?
Gladly second it.
And second, for a resolution honoring Keith Latta's service as the Health Department Director. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Keith, do you have anything you'd like to say as you're walking out the door?
Thank you for the kind words, and thank you for the support over the years from various groups of commissioners, council, too. And again, thank you.
Okay. And who will be, can you give us an announcement on, thank you, I think Martin was ahead of me on that, so sorry about that.
No, thank you, Jeff. We do have, Letty Zapata is going to be Keith's replacement as administrator, and with your permission, we'll allow her to introduce herself.
You have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Well, my name is Letty Zapata. I've actually been working for the Health Department for the past two years. I have 28 years plus working for government. My bachelor's degree in biology. I have a master's with dual concentration in public management and also criminal justice. I look forward to taking over Keith's position. I look forward to working with all of you. I'm going to miss him, no doubt. He's been a great mentor, he's been a great example of how to lead. I look forward to taking the department forward in the future, and, like I said, working with everyone, and getting Keith's support, everything he's done and training.
Thank you, Letty.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
Good luck out there.
Thank you.
Have fun.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Soil and Water Conservation, Michelle Benson. Is Michelle here? There she is. Hi, Michelle. We have an intro.
Yes, we do. Very excited to introduce my new coworker, Jared O'Brien. He's our district conservation project manager, and he's hit the ground running, and so I'm going to let him speak for himself.
Okay, thank you.
He's extremely talented, and is going to make a wonderful addition to our department.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Nice meeting everyone for the first time here. I started with the county SWCD in spring. Prior to that, I worked with the Indiana State Department of Agriculture, I was with their Division of Soil Conservation. I covered a large territory of northwest Indiana, and I was very pleased to be granted the opportunity to join Porter County Soil and Water Conservation District. It's my home county, and it's a lot nicer to focus on one than five, and allow us travel time. So far, I've been out in the field already, meeting with landowners and farmers, just addressing erosion issues, natural resource concerns, just doing everything we can in our office, very hardworking for water quality and natural resource conservation.
Good. I'm sure you've met Mike Navatney and our group up at Stormwater, and?
He attends a few of our monthly meetings.
Good.
He's actually an associate supervisor on our board.
Oh.
He graciously accepted our invitation, although I don't know if he knew what he was getting into, right, Mike?
Well, we like to have representation out there, and this is a big push that we're making for the county. And so it's going to take us a little while to get it all going here, but I think we're getting some good momentum, and we're into clean water, too.
Yep.
So we like clean water, so. So thank you, well, I'd like to welcome you to Porter County, and good luck in your new position.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you for coming forward, Michelle, and bringing them in.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
We really don't attend very often, because normally I'm in the schools throughout the school year. So I'm only able to come in during the summer.
Well, thank you, good seeing you.
Thank you.
Yep. Last on the agenda, we have Mary Connor from 639 Hollywood Drive in Hebron. And this is a request to have the block of Ventura in San Fernando closed on July 13th to July 15th for a block party, a two-day party, man, I think I'm going to have to come to that.
Well, it's actually not a two-day party.
Oh, all right.
In years past, I had the road closed, no problem, but this year, when I called, it seemed to have been an issue, so I was instructed to contact you, and that's why I'm here. And actually, this year, it's not for a block party, it is for my daughter's graduation, high school graduation party. But my yard isn't real big in the front, so it's just safer if we close that block. Yeah, and it, no problem with other, there's plenty of outroads for other cars.
Thank you for coming in and doing this. We just, we like to, anytime you close a road down, there's liability issues, and we just want to make sure that it was all done above board. I think our insurance carrier probably wants to see that, too, right, Mark? So that's, thank you for doing that.
Sure. So will I need to still then contact the highway department, like, or will they bring, in years previous, they just brought out barricades and put them up?
The highway department is here, and they know.
Okay.
Yeah, and he's sitting in the back room.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and?
And your neighbors know.
Yes, there's only two neighbors in effect, and they're totally fine with it.
Did you invite them?
Of course.
All right.
I think so much.
Second. We have a motion, second, to approve, a request to have the block of Ventura in San Fernando closed on July 13th to July 15th for a block party. And this is at 639 Hollywood Drive in Hebron, Indiana. Just Hollywood Drive makes it sound like it's going to be a great party. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And I believe that concludes our business on the agenda. Anybody wishing to address this board? With that, this board, oh, yep, here we go. Come on up, sir, come and sit at the table, and give us your name, your address. Good morning.
Good morning. Gentlemen, ladies. Maybe should have been backwards. There you go. Couldn't hear half of them over there.
Well, we had a?
Emily Vemus, I live at 65 Prairie Parkway in Valparaiso, better known as, I guess, Aberdeen, in that area.
Okay.
I came here mainly, there are quite a few construction trucks going through our area, and they're not county roads, and they're building this new subdivision back behind Aberdeen, it's called The Prairie. And their trucks seem to all coming, come through our area. Now, being a truck driver, you know, I mean, you're tearing down trees, and you've got 72,000-pound concrete trucks going on short roads, narrow roads, I should say, rounding through. To me, it would seem easier just to go down Tower Road or Division through, I'm not sure what this, what the subdivision's called, but it's tied into it in the back. And I understand that there was, I called, and I left messages, and I, I will say, they were finally returned, one wasn't returned. And I don't, I won't, if you want to know, I'll let you know later on, I'm not going to make it a public hearing. All I can say is if, if you ever leave a message on a man's phone, a woman's phone, she'll call you in an hour. If you leave it on a man's phone, he'll call you before he dies.
I got, I'm going to write that down. That one caught me off guard.
But anyway, I can't claim that, but I heard, I started, anyway, stick it with a grain of salt. But I would like to, I did call and finally talked, and they said that I should see the fellow who's, the contractor who's building that area up, which is Mr. Coleman.
Okay, Bob.
And then I was told there's an agreement someplace, they think it's either it's construction of the subdivision or the construction of the new homes. My question is, how can they get a permission from somebody that contractors' trucks cannot go through county roads? I mean, frost laws, I understand, but I can't understand why construction trucks. Okay, so now they're reverting to our subdivision, and we've got the trees overhanging, and over there is a kind of the trees, beautiful trees, beautiful road, wide road, and a county road also. I'm not sure what I can do, what we can do would have a private road, since it's a private road, I mean, you go from there. But anyway, I think it was, it would be apropos if they could use the other road. I mean, pickup trucks and what have you, when you start getting 70,000-pound trucks rolling through subdivisions, I mean, it's, and not just straight through, you know how it's designed, okay? The other thing is, that was it for that, unless you have any questions for me.
I just want to be clear, sir, that the roads, the roads that you're concerned about, are, you're saying they're private?
Yes, the Aberdeen, that's private roads.
Not all of them.
Not all of them, ours is, I know that.
Okay.
Ours is.
Okay.
Another concern I brought up about a year ago, and I'll repeat it, smoke road and division. You people improved that road, except you made it more dangerous, as far as I'm concerned. That traffic goes a lot faster now, going north and south, and sometimes they slow up, and sometimes they don't. I don't know if anybody here drives that road, but you better be real careful. And I was, I suggested before to put a four-way stop, I mentioned how many signs there are at the intersection. At that time, I think there were 16. You know, cross-traffic doesn't stop, you got two stop signs, you got warning traffic, cross, you know, dangerous. There were 16 back then, if you count the sign, including the stop signs. Now, I didn't count them, and I go that way going to school. And I go to Ivy Tech, and it's, I see people really hesitant when they go through that intersection. Those cars going north and south just go fast. And now, if they go to make a turn, you know, they didn't have to slow up and make a turn, how would they get so wide over there? But anyway, if you can put a four-way stop, I thought that's what they were going to do, or even put a stoplight there. And you've got buses now there, too, I can assume, from the, from the new school. If they go that way or not, I don't know. The other one, item number five on your agenda, I just picked this up, it's not why I came here, but as long as I'm here. You mentioned cost, you had 9% of construction cost on one of your agendas, it was number five. What is the construction cost?
$3 million is the estimate.
Okay, 9% of that, interesting. I think we got burned on that a while back, I won't even get into that one.
No, you're wrong, but you go ahead and make whatever assumptions you want to make.
Okay, thank you.
So you're getting the pushback that you were looking for, so there you go.
Okay.
And I disagree with you on smoke road, too. I think the sightlines have improved greatly, sir.
Uh huh.
And there's a bunch of engineers and a bunch of people that were involved in all that.
Okay.
And, you know, I think we, I grew up in South County, so I came up smoke road a lot. I know both families that live on the hill there, and I think it's a much better situation than it is today than what you evidently think it is.
Well, let me say that I haven't lived here that long.
Oh, okay.
So, to me, it was, it's dangerous. And someone told me at one time, I mean, even, that used to be like an ambulance run, when Porter County Hospital was downtown between Cedar Lake and then, I, that they were most downtown.
Never heard of that.
No. But anyway, I haven't lived here that long, so.
So you didn't see the road before we had, we had improved it?
Yes, I did, I did see it before you improved it. In fact, I was still happy. I saw them digging in the center, and, oh, they're going to put a stoplight up here. But anyway.
Well, all the engineering and everything that went through all that, and went through the state L P A program and everything else, and it was all, it was all engineered, and all approved based on all the traffic studies and everything that went on out there. So I think what we have today is a culmination of all that work and engineering, and going through all the approval processes that you need to go through, so.
Okay, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, thank you.
I mean, it's just my opinion.
Yep.
And I think?
And you're entitled to that.
You got that right, and you are, too. You are, too.
Yep.
Oh, that's it, I talked to someone outside, I got to answer on the last one.
Okay. Sir, we will, we will have, we'll contact, I'll do it personally, we'll contact the sheriff's department and have them monitor the traffic speed on that road. It's, the improvements we made on that road is not the problem. The problem is the, is the vehicles traveling too fast.
Yeah, I, like I say, I only travel probably six times a week.
Yeah, we'll contact the sheriff's department and ask them to put, you know, to keep an eye on it, okay?
Slowing down a little bit.
Maybe we'll put some kind of radar sign out there to let people know how fast they travel.
Just don't put any speed bumps.
No.
I don't go that way, I go east and west, but don't give them any speed bumps.
I don't make the snow pile drivers want that.
No, no, no speed bumps, no, no speed bumps.
Thank you, sir, and we'll look into those.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming forward. Anybody else wishing to address this board on this day? And with that, this board?